Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, all members are present, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes? Counsel? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Joel, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. All received them in your packet. Is there any changes, corrections, or clarification needed? Hearing nothing is, do I have a motion to approve the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Sheldon, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joel. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Obstain.
Motion carries, four in favor, none against, one abstention. This now brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Just go up to the podium, please, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Bill Fredericks, representing Fredericks Tire and Oil. Just want to go over a couple things over the Second Street project. I know I've talked with majority of you about it. And our concerns with where our business is, with it all being commercial property is the road width. It has nothing to do with the sidewalk, it's the shrinking of the road for us to be able to get our products, our tires mainly, into our warehouses where our loading dunks are. That's the main thing, we want you guys to hopefully see that it'll make it very difficult, if possible, if that road does get narrowed. So we do get a lot of trucks with semis that have to jack and they have to get to our warehouses, so if you guys, we just want to make sure that you keep that in mind where we're at with that, if that road would get narrowed. The other thing is, we'd like to address is the water and septic stubs into the buildings, into our cold storage warehouse buildings. We have no use for them there, never will have a use for them. We understand that if at some point the city feels that they want to put them in there just for in case an emergency down the road, somebody buys it, we understand that, but we don't feel there's, we'll never use them. And if, at that case, if somebody down the road wants to utilize them, then those assessments could be assessed at that time. And I just wanted to present our concerns with, I have seen or we've gone through some of the drawings on that are drawn up currently, and feel that'll be pretty detrimental to our business where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Call it third time, is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings, we'll go on to reports and presentations, EDA report.
So the EDA met today in regular session, on their regular meeting, they had two items on the agenda, they had considerable discussion on that. The two things that are on there are regarding potential real estate transactions that we hope to bring in front of the city council at the next meeting. The first is the potential purchase of property to develop into housing development, and the second one is actually the potential sale of a second lot in the South Industrial Park. So those are the two things, and if we can pull it all together by the next meeting, we'll go into closed session at the end and have discussions on those in more detail. Other than that, there's no action requested for tonight's meeting.
Okay, questions, concerns? Okay, twenty twenty-two public improvement project presentation.
So we're going to turn this over to the city engineers. What the purpose tonight is to have the, review the plans and specs and approve them for going out for bid, and then at a future date when we come in back to bid, that's when you would actually award it. So tonight is actually to go over the plans and specs and authorize us to advertise for bids, so I think Chuck is going to take this one.
There we go. Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Excited to run through a presentation tonight, run over some design things and for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two capital improvements project. Quickly go over the project areas included. The green area is the reclamation area, everything from Park Road North, and the full reconstruct area is the area in red. Also added since feasibility report are some improvements to the Hickman and Park Road intersection, as well as some trail improvements in that area. We'll be reclaiming and repaving the boat landing parking lot, and also relocating the RV dump station, south side of Park Road, as well as the truck stop storm sewer is included in this project as well. Just run through some quick general goals we'll be accomplishing with this project. For the reclamation area, if you drive that street today, you probably feel the bumps and the cracks. Basically that pavement has lost its flexibility, those cracks are starting to separate, so we'll be improving that roadway with replacing it, and also some spot curb replacement as needed throughout that area. The goals we'll be accomplishing with the full reconstruct area, the water main, the sanitary sewer, those are original pipes from the nineteen sixties, they're older. Their water mains cast iron, very susceptible to breaking, four to six inch in size, so we'll be increasing the sizes to six and eight, which will increase our capacity and fire flows. And the sewer, sanitary sewer, the PUC regularly jets and rods sanitary mains in this project area yearly, more than once a year sometimes for root issues and other issues. For storm sewer goals, there are some flooding issues like at Second and Pine, that, basically that area collects in ponds in that intersection, there is no outlet to, if it owner flows, it does overflow to the east to the empty city lot, so we'll be installing storm sewer in that area and effectively draining that area. As well as new storm sewer extended on the west side of Main Street to areas like the low point of Cedar and the west in the Pacific. The new storm sewer is designed for the ten-year rain event, which is a three-point-nine-nine-inch rainfall in a twenty-four-hour period, and the pond, the Second Street Pond, is sized for a hundred-year rain event, which is a six-point-four-three-inch rainfall in a twenty-four-hour period. Both of these areas will improve runoff quality at Sock Lake and the river. For street, street goals, again replacing the aged roadway and then extend and connect pedestrian routes throughout this project area. So with this large project, this is larger than the twenty eighteen project, so we do feel we need to go, we went to a two-year project. The areas in red will be constructed in twenty twenty-two this year, and the areas in green will be constructed in twenty twenty-three. With this phasing plan, will benefit the residents, basically, the residents on Second and Willow have the ability to park on the phase-two areas this year, they'll be left in pavement this year, so they have better access around the park, and then vice versa for twenty twenty-three. Along with the PUC, we'll be replacing water and sanitary utilities within this project. This just kind of shows a planned view of those new water mains and services extended to the rightways. Water mains again increased to six to eight inch, and services one and one and a half inch extended to the rightway, as well as the sanitary mains and services extended to the rightway. There are a few sanitary and water services that have been replaced recently by residents on Willow and Walnut, and we identified those in this project, so those residents will be just re-planting within the street, so we won't be going to the rightway for those With this project, we did a hydrology study, two areas, the green area on the left is the drainage area west of Main Street, Main Street kind of divides this project, and it affect, or it'll collect and drain to the sediment control structure identified on the slide. And the area on the right, in red, is the, will collect and drain to the Second Street on, this pond is in the wellhead protection area, so it will be lined, it will be a wet pond, but it will treat, collect the runoff, and will help with rate control discharge to the river as well. This just kind of shows the, our hydro CAD models that we had to use to size these ponds and storm sewer in this area. This is east of Main Street, and this one is west of Main Street. For the Second Street Pond, kind of, we ran a P eight model, which tells us how much total suspended solids and total phosphorus it will remove on a yearly basis. So the total suspended solids it will collect is just over twenty thousand pounds, and the total phosphorus is just under fifty pounds. To kind of put that in perspective, twenty thousand pounds, it's about a half a dump truck load of sediment that'll collect in bottom of pond each year. And then forty-seven pounds of phosphorus, so that's about a feed sack full, so. So this was the green portion, west of Main Street. We will be installing a sediment control structure, kind of in the, along south side of Park Road, right underneath the Wabagon Trail. This will treat the low flows, and due to the high flows, we needed to install a storm diversion manhole, which will direct low flows to the treatment device, and any high flows will spill over the weir and exit or discharge into Sock Lake. This slide just runs through, or shows the storm improvements and modifications for the truck stop. We are rerouting the storm sewer from, today it goes across Highway seventy-one, seventy-one, and we're rerouting it through the industrial park, which was kind of originally planned for. We're also adding a pond here as well. This slide just shows a planned view of the boat landing parking lot, and also the relocation of the RV dump station. So currently it's, the RV dump stations in the turnaround for the boat landing or the exit, we'll be relocating it across on the south side of Park. And kind of a convenient spot for campers, if they're exiting the campground, they can pull in off Park and dump, or campers coming in the campground to pull in and fill up with This slide shows the reconfiguration of Hickman Drive and Park Road intersection, as well as some trail improvements in this area. So we'll be installing a new ten-foot wide trail on the west side of Hickman Drive, that'll connect with the Wabagon Trail up to the splash pad, pedestrian crossing, just north of this slide. And then as well as a six-foot wide between this trail on the right side of your screen, that'll be going on the north side of Park, that will kind of connect this area with Sinclair Lewis Park. And we, basically what our goal with this intersection was to kind of set it up for a future traffic study or intersection study, if we were to, if this city wanted to change some stopping moments for this intersection, it will, pedestrian, pedestrian crossings will be kind of sucked into the intersection to provide better for safety. If you can remember on the Wabagon Trail where it crosses, it kind of crosses halfway between Pacific and Park Road currently, so we're bringing that crossing closer to the intersection for improved pedestrian safety. This slide shows some other pedestrian road improvements, you've probably seen this slide before, but I think it shows a, just a good overview of the existing sidewalk, the concrete sidewalk, which is shown in blue, that we'll be replacing with this project, as well as us reconnecting the, us connecting the concrete sidewalks in red, those will be new locations. Just to recap on street widths, Cedar and Pacific Streets, currently designed for a thirty-two foot wide street, face the curb to face the curb, which allows for parking on one side, two lanes of traffic, kind of assuming that parking is kind of staggered. The rest of the streets, except for Second Street near downtown, is proposed for a thirty-six foot wide, face the curb to face the curb, and this section allows for parking on both sides and two lanes of traffic. I believe this picture you're looking at is an example of a thirty-six foot wide street, which is from the twenty eighteen project, I think it's Oak Street. This slide shows some added parallel parking on Pacific Street between Cedar and Willow. We're adding about fourteen parking stalls. This is, will provide benefit to residents that want to park and access the trail or overflow parking for the splash pad. Basically, we just bumped the curb out on that north side of Pacific, which will allow for parallel parking. Looking at Second Street downtown, this is an option, but we, currently it's a thirty-six foot wide street, we are adding sidewalk on the north side of this street or proposing it. This kind of shows those options for no part, signing it for no parking, and striping it for some parking on the north side of the street. So we are currently maintaining the parking, off-street parking on the lower side of this, lower part of the slide, and then adding some, there is parking there too, we could stripe, we would stripe for parallel parking on the north side. So looking at where the curb, the new curb will be, we're moving the curb about, pretty much right on seven feet inside, or closer, moving the curb seven feet from where it is today, so, which is about the, little less than the width of a parking stall on that side, so there are options, and I, we just heard from Fredericks' concerns, and we can, another option too is, basically on the south side of the street, the plan is to install a knockdown curb from the west side of their third lot all the way to the intersection. We could easily do that on the north side of the street and install thicker sidewalk, which could allow for maybe a semi to drive up on the curb, which will allow a little, little bit more room for turning maneuverability. And talking with the PUC, electrical PUC, their plan is to, not sure, they weren't sure on the timing of it, but their goal is to bury the electrical line on Second Street, and also some crossings, and this is one power pole, I'm sure Fredericks is aware of this one, it's planned to be removed, so that'll benefit them and their maneuverability into that, into their driveway there for their trucks. Shannon already wasn't sure on the timing of his project, but for sure install conduits for future burying, if it wasn't happened to get to it in time. This slide looks at the Second Street downtown, east side of Main Street. This is a forty-foot wide street for half a block, and then narrows down to thirty-six foot wide street. So we are, or if you can see on the north side, we're striping it for diagonal parking, which increases the number of parking stalls by three in that area. And we will be maintaining the current off-street parking on the south side of the street by Looking at cost estimate, I have shown the feasibility, the cost from feasibility report. We have updated our, our cost estimate with some projects that have been being bid recently. We are seeing, not surprising, but generally higher, higher costs coming in, so I've kind of laid that out, but, and also broke apart the, the cost for the Park Road Trail, intersection, Park and Hickman intersection, dump station, and the boat landing parking lot, and the truck stop storm sewer improvements. The total project costs including those, the full reconstruct and the reclamation, six, just under six-point-nine-inch. And we did probably cover on everything, but there's a lot to cover, so I could talk for days on, on the whole plan set, but with that, we can, Keith doesn't have anything to add?
I would like to go through that Second Street, just the, or, probably that one.
Just talk about a couple different options of where we're at, just for something the council can think about, because we know this is a concern area, it's a concern certainly of the landlords. As Chuck was saying, you know, we're looking at having that street be narrowed on the north side, six, seven feet, I believe it was. We currently have parallel parking up there, just throwing out some ideas that could change this. One is, we could have no parking through this area, which essentially allows that same amount, because that, that width of that parking is essentially what the, the street's coming in, so therefore there would be the ability for that same turning movement. We could also enhance by putting drive over curb, you know, this, basically this whole north block as well. And in this area, perhaps where there's turning movements, you know, maybe it's from here to here in that sidewalk, that sidewalk could be enhanced to say a six inch thick, which would allow if a truck had to put, you know, its front wheels on it, do an attorney movement, it would, it would withstand that. So it would actually sort of improve the ability and the, the width and the operation of those turning movements. From a street parking perspective, because of the, of the drive over curb, and all this being paved through here, we actually could redo this, we could have angle parking through, through this area to increase some parking in this area, and across the street, if you want to move two slides ahead, I think it was, on this, there's actually room that there could be some additional parking over here. So in this vicinity, at least in this corner, we could actually add parking in this area as well, so there are opportunities for us to be able to do that. So there does provide some, some improvements that could be changed in the plan, which could be fairly easily done, which could make actually Fredericks' issues become, not as, no issues at all, in fact, we could enhance what they have right now, enhancing more turning movement and having more parking areas. So that's a possibility for the council to, to think about, and for, you know, for maybe the, the landlords to, to comment on, but that is something that, that is easily for us to be able to make a change, so just some, something to consider as you, as you think about it, and, and we can make those changes as we move forward into a, into a final plan to go out, so. If there's any change, you know, questions on that, we can certainly talk a bit more about it.
What you're suggesting, Keith, would be, if I'm understanding what you just said, keeping the sidewalk, thickening the sidewalk, allowing for a semi to be able to turn onto it, but still keeping it a no parking street?
Yeah, have it, have it a no parking, because we're already looking at no parking here, we essentially would make this, depending on the turning movement, and this is something we can work the landlords, if it has to go all the way, or maybe they can, maybe there's a couple parking spots that could stay, otherwise you make this all no parking through here, and we have all of this, the ability for, for that turning movement. And we could also increase that sidewalk, which if the trucks ever did go up and put their front wheels as they're making those maneuvers, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have a detrimental impact to that sidewalk, so it'd actually give them more room to maneuver than what's there now. When this stuff gets removed, or the PUC, we, we understand that that's kind of an issue, maneuverability, especially in this particular bay, that becomes an enhancement as well, when we get rid of that. And for parking, because a lot of customers are here and leaving vehicles and that, if we have the ability to add those parking stalls, not only here but over here, that could provide some, some benefit as well. So these ones obviously on the other side are kind of across the street, but it does provide parking in that overall area, in that, you know, block and a half area, so.
Because currently there's parallel parking on both sides of the street that is hundred percent utilized?
Yep, correct.
For the length of the block.
Except for two to seven.
Yep. Mostly park, there's parking in through here, I don't know how much is parked through here, there's probably some, but you know, we can add, there's ability to add probably six spots in through here, we'd have to lay that all out, but it appears that that would be possible in, in through these areas that are not in front of garage doors, you know, entrance areas, as well as probably five or so across the street.
I'd say don't, don't eliminate all the parking on the street in the red area?
Yes.
Apparently today. Because now they park on both sides.
Yeah, yeah.
They do, but it's an option to give them the most, the most maneuverability possible, basically, it's an option to do. So right, here's where their entrance is for their semis. This, this is the pole that's, at some point going away, so they could, basically, we could ask them how much room they need, and I'm not sure which way that each truck comes in, if it backs in from the east or backs in from the west, but, you know, anything outside of that, then we could shrink that no parking zone.
Yeah, so it could be smaller, no parking than what that's currently showing.
So obviously they don't park in front of here, there's a, they do park, one stall here, this is kind of the entrance for one bay here, generally no parking there, and then usually these are all parallel, kind of on the side of their, into their garage, yep, the garage doors, so there is parallel parking here, but this is the, where we could sign up for no parking, just to increase their maneuverability on the north side as
The one thing, as far as parking on the other side of Main Street, I don't even think that's even, should be considered. You know, to me, pedestrian traffic across Main Street to go get their vehicle, whether it's an employee or a customer, that, that doesn't help them a bit, as far as I'm concerned. So, you know, let's, it's, for me, just let's stay on the west side of Main Street, and try to figure out how this is going to work, rather than even consider parking on that other side. So how wide's that street right now?
It varies from Main Street to Oak, at Oak Street it's thirty-six feet wide, and at Main Street it's forty, forty-two, forty-three, forty-three.
So you're thinking, you're basically just going to, if the sidewalk would happen in there, you're six feet, and then a seven, and then a parking lane, so basically you're narrowing it up fifteen feet?
So we're moving the curb in seven feet, if we do park in the north side, that would be additionally eight.
Right, so you're looking at fifteen feet narrower than what it is now?
If we do park in the north side.
Wow. Where do, where, how do we get those parking spots on the further west there, that would be the angle parking, based on the current layout of that street? If we're going to have a thirty-six foot wide street, we right now have forty to forty-two, like where, where does that?
Could be similar kind of what's over here, should be angle parking?
But like, but where the road sits, I mean, like there's property line and stuff?
Yeah, they have a bay here, so I don't know, we could have parallel, but I really don't know if.
There wouldn't be, it wouldn't be all the way, but you'd be coming through here, you'd have, the cars would, you'd have to lay the sand here, they might stick out, which means you'd end up having to potentially put a bump out to protect that at very end.
We'd have to widen the street in that area.
Yeah, because as I was saying, like right now, if we're already losing, moving seven feet on the, the north side, where are we gaining to the south side to park?
Right.
The rightway goes right to that warehouse building wall.
Yeah, so the parking would still be within the rightway, but it would be.
But we'd have to adjust what, how it kind of sits there right now.
So we're basically robbing one side to add to the other side.
So one other, one other feature I'd like to run through is, a big constraint with this design is the center lines, on this side of the Main Street, meeting up with the center line of east side of Main Street. Currently, we have the center lines, kind of straight across, you know, we didn't want a street jog, so we don't have the ability to, to move, anything we move the center line north, you know, creates a street jog, so it inhibits us to do that. Like on this side of the street, the curb is, we're putting the curb back on the south side, exactly where it is today, right here, and this maintains this diagonal part, so we kind of worked our way north in our design that way. So that's center, center line, we run it straight across.
And it currently lines up with that. But if we do move it north, you know, then we have that street jog again. Just another constraint.
Yeah, personally, I don't think that's going to be that big of a deal. We've lived with it for how many years? Just straighten that now wouldn't make much sense.
Kind of a clarification, but I think there's a little confusion because Warren's saying you're losing fifteen feet, but you're saying you're moving the curb seven, so.
Seven feet.
Moving it seven feet, so where the cars are parking right now would be sidewalk. And so you're not, and then you're parking outside of that.
Basically, you're losing that.
Seven feet, not, not.
Not fifteen, yeah.
So basically, a parking lot, the sidewalk is where the cars are parked right now.
Correct.
Right.
And so if you were going to maintain parking as well as the sidewalk, then you lose the width of a parked car for maneuvering the sidewalk.
Right.
So if you eliminate parking in areas that need to be for maneuverability for vehicles, which might not be everything, perhaps a proportion of this, which we could make no parking, now they have the same area that they have now, in order to make that turning movement. We could work directly with Friedrichs to ask them, you know, how much they need and.
Why don't you come ask us that first? I mean, see where we are, what we need, what we're using. As far as that goes, we use both sides of that road for parking every inch that's been, is being used for parking right now. I don't know where you're getting that some of that isn't being used, because every, every part of that is, along with part of some acquisitions we made in the last few years, for another sixty, that we park in another location. So just to clarify, you saying some of that isn't being used, every bit of that is. So if it's full from, you know, all the way from Oak to Main Street, both sides of the road, you know, all the time, you know, then what we were just talking about, if we're eliminating some parking for maneuverability, that might be several spots potentially, then the question is, can we make them up? And parallel parking or versus parallel parking through here?
Angle.
Angle parking versus parallel parking.
So it's not curiosity, that if you made it no parking all the way down the street, why would you get a sidewalk? If nobody's going to be parking on it?
Well, the sidewalks for the pedestrian.
But I mean, really, you can go down, along the lane if you're heading off a park.
Well, this does connect, this does connect to mainly, main used sidewalks, you know, east of Main Street and Oak Street.
Which will still go straight, along the straight, but Main Street. If they're heading off the park, that was the concern, that was the problem, was say, whatever stage it is again, you go off the park. Well, if you can park down that street, then park on Main Street or Oak Street. They can use those sidewalks to get down there.
Ideally, we want to get the pedestrians out of the streets, you know, we don't want them within the driving lanes, so.
It's to provide that overall pedestrian flexibility, so that people are walking can utilize that. So is that going, you know, a block out of the way and coming back. Ultimately, it's your decision how you want to go about it. So it's entirely your call. Just giving you options to be able to, you know, meet the needs of certainly the landlords, as well as the general public using that area.
So basically, the way I see this is, the main heartache of that whole block section is the sidewalk. Basically, because if you put a sidewalk in there, you're reducing the width of the street seven to eight feet. And it's affecting a property owner that's probably got seventy-five percent of all that frontage on that street, all because of a sidewalk. So to me, that, I've had a real issue about having a sidewalk on that block strictly because it's commercial. It's warehouses and commercials, so I don't know if there's really a reason to have a sidewalk. Pedestrian safety is primary, but we've eliminated sidewalks before that we were supposed to go in where they went nowhere. And we decided not to do it. So the way I look at it, if it's going to solve the problem by, you know, and make it easier for them, plus the city, we eliminate the sidewalk.
We have Brian and Joe here that can maybe chime in on their perspective of safety in that block. Do you see, either of you have any issues of eliminating a sidewalk on that block?
I don't think, well, personally, I'm a little bit able to be walking by the park sidewalk and using the trail. It's a first alarm on that second street. I've seen people walk in there very often. And then I'm a little concerned about the angle parking. Why is that?
Well, there is none, currently, there is none on this side. Currently, there is none on this graphic that you're looking at here. There is on the other side, the east side.
With that wider street, we have the ability to fit more parking on that north side. Currently, the federal parking on the whole side of the street is still forty, over forty feet wide. So those driving lanes are larger. You don't necessarily need that large driving lane, so we have the ability to increase the, um, parking.
Take the sidewalks out.
Just in that one block.
Yeah.
Just like here, so if you guys have that number during the day, all by chance, if you, I mean, if you sit there for a half hour, you're going to see how much, how many vehicles go in and out, in and out of congestion it does get. Where now you narrow that out that much, it's going to make it worse. It increases workload, it doesn't, it doesn't mean putting up more accident rates. And the tighter it is, I mean, more chance of people getting hit, getting in other vehicles. That's the safe issue. Generally, I guess my experience, the narrower this, the lane, the travel lane is, the slower people drive. The wider it is, you know, you know, free for all, yeah, it'll be easier, it's safer.
Or just cares for the truck maneuverability, would you be able to hazard a guess as to, say, if there was some spots that were eliminated? How many would it need to be, you know, maybe lengthwise, in order for, to have that open for truck maneuverability?
Would keep the road the same width, not?
No, I'm not saying, if it was, if you wanted to, we talked about the option of maybe having some of it for the truck.
So just for the driving lanes, or maxing driving lanes?
Well, we have three loading docks.
Right, right.
All three shots back in the same.
It's right across the screen.
Right, I think we're three shots.
No, 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 yes. Here's a back end loading dock there, you have a wood loading dock.
I agree.
In Big Five, and then there's seven, that's seven. That's seven to your left, the yellow, and then the back end loading dock there, and then there's one to the right. Right there.
Right there. And are those, the large trucks for all of them?
Yeah, it depends where, where which tires go in the trailer. Is it a huge truck or semi truck?
Where does your largest stand?
Typically, in the back end, one by the, you know, where we have that, typically, none of them.
None of them.
It all depends on how our suppliers got the load for other customers. On what they bring, if they can bring this, use small tires, um, depending with where, if you go in, potentially, you'll drop a day after great for other customers on the road.
Well, I'm agreeing more with the mayor there. I say just take the doggone sidewalk off for that block. If you don't have the sidewalk there, the street's wider. I think that's the best way to go. Think that works best for you and the city too.
I was, and when you were talking about the park, I was asked by one person about getting the Holy Family. And so I saw this pedestrian through traffic, and I realized when people are parking, they go to Frederick's, and they park on a road and walk across the street from there. So I did that part. And so that was the only other question, was like, where are people going when they're blocking that way? Now we're going to have a sidewalk on Second Street. Are they going to the park, are they going downtown, are they going across the highway, are they going to Frederick's? We don't really know where they're going, because they don't have a sidewalk there now. So that was one thing that maybe brought up to me. And you can only project, I guess, or estimate where you think people are going.
But it, you know, it's a council's wishes. If you like to do something different than what's shown here, we consider we accommodate that. I think we've kind of talked through pros and cons, and the landlord has expressed their concerns and opinions.
Any ideas, just how many current street parking spots there are, as opposed to how many angled spots you could get in that section?
Uh, we'd have to lay that out and see exactly how many, it's not exactly where the doors are, where things could be through there, but I don't have that number in front of me at this moment.
I don't see adding east parking as a benefit, considering in, you know, three years, we're tearing up Highway seventy-one, which would then eliminate those possibilities of use for the time being. And I have to agree that I think the majority of people who utilize that space, the business, the walking routes around the business, were used to that not being a sidewalk street and respecting the business use of that property. So I don't see currently a need for the sidewalk, and I think people will find routes that benefit them. I live, you know, eight blocks from this space, and I've dropped my vehicle off and walked home using the sidewalks available and not found it difficult. So I'd, I'd have to agree.
Yeah, we're not into action items.
Your direction as to how you want to finalize this area, and we will do so. I think, I'm not sure if we have really anything more to add than what's out. We've talked about probably all the feasible options for this area. So it's a question of what you all feel is the appropriate thing to do here, and we'll make those.
Yeah, I think I would add that if you don't want angle parking on the north side of this street, you won't control not to go that way. You probably, you're a great one, that just happens, you have thirty-six foot wide street, parallel parking.
On the east side of Main Street? Yeah, because basically, it's parallel parking near and out. And if we're not going to use, there's nothing else there that's actually going to be using that parking. Right now, nobody, I'm, there might be one car that parks not on the side of A and H or two, but not to the point that we need to go diagonal on that side. So if we need to narrow that street, I don't have a problem with it. And I'm, I'm going to push really hard not to go with the sidewalk on the north side of, west side of Main Street.
I agree a hundred percent.
So, because that seems to be the crutch of the whole problem of getting everything satisfied, is that sidewalk.
I agree with that.
You know, but.
Shannon, just to touch on your question on the parking spots, I just looked at the aerial map from the county. When they did the flyer, there was eight cars parked on the north side of Second Street there along Friedrich's at the time, that picture. So you've got eight parking spots on that side. Looks like there was four on the south side at that time. You'd probably get one or two maybe there yet. So that would be the parking side of things. Okay, I'll address that for you. I mean, I guess my, my general thoughts as it relates to the sidewalk stuff, I mean, there is the pedestrian safety issue. Certainly, they could be going to and from, you got the church and everything. If you walked that way, came in from the, from the north side of the church or Holy Family and stuff, there certainly could be that traffic there that I get the merits of having that. But I think the benefits and detriments to the property owner and stuff, you know, to the community, to the property owner, probably outweighed by the narrowing of the streets, so I guess I'm on board with removing that sidewalk there.
To add to that, at least my opinion, I mean, because I thought about the getting to church and school as well, but to me, the best place to access both of those are in front anyway. So diverting around is not unreasonable.
I think ultimately, I mean, the action items, actually right after this. If there's any other questions or things that's related to the plan as a whole, because we are, the action item is to offer, you know, to approve and authorize. We would want the direction as to, you know, in this, or if there's any other change to make, how you want to make those plans finalized, and then we'll do so.
And we could take care of that, and then that's the first action item we've got. When we get to that point, we can include what our requests are.
Other areas, any other concerns?
I have, I have one question about the dump station.
Yes, sure.
That was not originally discussed, so I'm wondering what the necessity of that, why that was concluded to be part of the plan.
And let's input from city staff, uh, work staff, to move it there. You know, so I don't know, Ben wants to.
Yeah, this was, this was something added from city staff, that and.
I guess, looking at the, looking at the plan, I see the walking trail going, so it says Park Road Trail, is kind of right in the middle of it. So you're going to go, are you, like, how?
Where are you going?
Where, where you have like the, the shaded area at the front.
Right, here's the RV.
Yep.
Okay, are, this is a trail system going to connect with the intersection and the new trail in Hickman? Or can it connect, you know?
Yeah, so you're cutting into the hill to make this new dump station?
Yeah, we actually kind of strategically put it in a spot where the grains have missed.
Okay.
And it kind of fits, it's only sixteen feet wide. Trays actually, you know, well, actually, here is, you see these dark lines, that's our grain type.
And we're not, yeah, okay, so trail is south of that, we're not running into, getting into the trail area?
No, it's right here.
Okay, because on the drawing, it says Park Road, oh, I see, never mind. It says Park Road Trail, but it was labeled odd.
Okay, so we just, we just, we just put the RV dump site in that spot last year.
In the current, the current RV dump.
In the current RV dump site, yeah, we just put that there.
When we built the fish, yeah.
So now, we're finding out that nobody can get to it because of the public access, or why are we moving it?
We built the fish cleaning station, we went ahead and put the dump station there.
Yeah.
And then the, this is much better location, and so staff will actually be, the city will actually be moving that over there, separate from the project. I mean, the project will be putting in the curb and stuff, and then we'll be moving the dump, the existing dump station over to the new location. We had extended the sewer line to impede the curb across the road, so we have to take that across.
What, what is the potential financial implication of just this portion of the project?
I think that was on.
I didn't see, I'm sorry.
This is the RV dump site?
Yeah.
That was kind of combined with some other things in the estimate.
Do you remember what that is?
It was one seventy-five with whatever the other things were. Yeah, that was everything, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
And the trails.
Okay.
It's basically, it's a condition occur, it's maybe a base, they have that, and then to be towards next to, center to center.
And then how, how far off from our original estimate of this project are we with the final costs?
Well, these are our estimates.
Right.
I'm not very volatile here, of course, what I've seen. But these are estimates currently, it's six point eight million, usability level of five point, it's over five point three million, but we have the truck stop farm, who is lumped in that, and, um, if we want a few additions of the park road trail, intersection of one each, the station will, we're going to add it six.
We don't know exactly, you know, the bids, the prices are changing. Sometimes we're told that they're coming down, sometimes we're not, so it's, we don't really, you know, we do our best to figure out where it's going. It's really difficult right now, so we don't, our best estimate. I think it's fairly conservative at this point, the number that we have in here. Could we get better bids? We certainly hope so. You know, there are options to be able to pull stuff out, you know, if we have financial issues with where the bids come in, so that, in this project, it's fairly easy to chump a piece out of there if we need to.
Okay, the other part that, you got any more on that?
No, sorry.
I'm just asking before I move on. I'm just asking before I move on. Uh, the, we talked a little about before the meeting that Willow Street coming over that edge heading north to Park Road, there's that crown in the road, so basically makes that trail crossing in that intersection a blind intersection to a certain extent. So I was just wanting, I had mentioned dropping, to drop that down, but you said that we'd have to drop that like three feet to the, and that wouldn't work with the driveways in that area.
So our first, our first attempt at this, it's kind of a design as an iterative process, right? So we put in acceptable design curves, which we did here. Currently, it's, um, if you drive that road, there's a sharp PI or a point of intersection where it reflects and it goes down. So, if we were to put an acceptable vertical curve, uh, in this, in this roadway here, um, we found that would, we'd be cutting three feet of roadway on the center line. And those would just, that would just impact these residents' driveways just too much, so it's not acceptable to do that. So we backed off of that. Um, currently, I, you know, it's probably about maybe a foot or less cut that we'll be doing, but so we won't be able to get to, I guess, perfect or desirable vertical curve, but we'll be able to improve it slightly. Another option to improve the site distance is to raise this intersection, uh, which was, was being discussed before the meeting as well. It will impact drainage in the curway, which we can deal with. It's not a problem. Um, but it, that is one way to improve the site distance. So basically, our goal with this intersection was to, you know, to set it up for a possible future, uh, you know, change of the stopping movements. Uh, we do recommend, uh, doing an intersection study before, uh, those stopping movements are changed. But, so yeah.
And we moved, you know, the trail pedestrians so that there's more, uh, reaction time to be able to forward, especially in motors obviously going northbound on Willow to be able to see those, those pedestrians.
Yeah, the current Wabagon Trail, uh, crosses right about here, you know, it's a straight line. So we actually bumped that to the intersection to provide just a little more site distance for those crossings, a little more pedestrian safety. Generally, we want pedestrian crossings at the intersections, not mid-block or, um, somewhere we're not, uh, the vehicle's not gonna stop, right?
Park Road, you can see is, is, uh, if you can see here, you can kind of point out where it's changed the, the alignment just a little bit.
Oh, sure. So another, another design feature we, or design item we did to help this intersection was to change the, modify the alignment to Park Road where it in, where it comes into the intersection. So currently, it's kind of angled northwest, so we changed that to the alignment so it comes in perpendicular to Hickman, which will improve the turning movements towards that and here as well.
And site, and site, so that people will be able to see it better.
It's kind of all better for.
If we raise, maybe you could talk a little bit about grades, if we raise that, how that would impact Park Road?
Yeah, so we talked about possibly raising this, um, which will increase the, the slope or the, yeah, the slope of the road, the grain of the road. Um, I think it's at a four percent we were looking at, uh, it is today. So it may increase it up to a five percent. Um, but it will, it will, uh, create some drainage issues just north of the intersection. There will be pond water that, if you raise it, the, currently the drainage just flows around, down to the, the Oakway Park, so you probably have to extend storm sewer up there to get that drainage to fix that. And then we'll, you know, add a cost with that as well.
With the walkway on the other side of, uh, the north side of Park Road, how far down is that proposed to go?
So that goes to the, any parking lot?
Okay.
And kind of, the goal there was just to connect, uh, that up with, that kind of Simcree Lewis Park area. So.
Okay.
You know, and that's, it, that's not a serious intersection as far as, I don't think having a too much of an issue. I think moving the trail will work because that will give you more of a chance when you do come over that.
Yeah.
In my case, most of the time, it's the people that do their rolling stops through that stop sign that don't, as they're turning onto Hickman, that are ninety percent of the problem. It isn't the people on the trail that are the ones that are causing an issue.
One foot cut here will definitely.
And if you can see your sight line, that's what I was, if you can see your sight line from farther away and if one foot helps, it helps, but.
Something like a, you know, if we did a full study, we would physically go out there and, uh, you know, calculate some site distances while walking it.
Right.
But that would be, you know, part of an intersection study.
Yeah. As I said, I'd say probably ninety percent of the time, and if you're on Willow heading onto Hickman, if you gotta hit your brakes at that intersection, it's because somebody's coming off Park Road and not coming to do a complete stop. It's not the people on the trail crossing. Personal opinion. So.
Any other concerned areas, anything you want to discuss?
Can you put that slide up on the east side?
Side of, yep.
Yeah, where was it? No, keep going. No, you, you had some buildings listed there.
Oh, the one with the services deal, the newer services?
Uh, no, no.
Tell me when it's stopped.
Yeah. Oh, you haven't hit it yet.
Uh, we're getting the storm.
Yeah, it was back to the beginning.
Yeah. Well, anyway, you had Studio Seventy-One Salon there. Uh, they've moved out of there. They're not there anymore. They've moved up. They're in the old Heartland Gallery now.
There's a new one in there though.
Oh, yeah.
There's a, there's a new business in that spot already.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Our, our error for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Getting the new, new order.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
I guess one more, the remainder of Second Street, so outside of the chunk that we've been spending all this time talking about. Is the sidewalk going to take up, uh, street width there as well, or is that gonna be right at the curb, or what's the?
So what, which particular area?
So the rest of Second Street, so.
Oak Street to Willow, further, further to the west of there.
Right.
So actually this, uh, well, all, generally, all the streets in the property area, uh, most of them, um, which I, this was part of the feasibility or in the feasibility report, but are wider than thirty-six feet. Um, let's go up to, so generally those streets are, uh, curves are moving in as well as the sidewalk. So actually, it will be impacting people's yards, you know, slightly less by maybe like a foot or two at the most on the inside, um, I think. Does that answer your question?
There are some sidewalks that are not.
Right. So, and those had, like the boulevard, I didn't know if it would go right to the curb or if it would.
Well, that's not hard to the curb.
Yeah.
No, there will be a six.
Okay.
We normally don't like to put them against the curb unless there's site constraints, um, you know, just if there's snow removal issues and those kinds of things.
Sure.
Like to have some snow storage there.
You know, they sort of buffer you get from traffic, it's an increase of safety, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Then we'll move on to our action items. Seven A, approve resolution twenty-two-two-dash-twelve approving plans and advertising for bids, Second Street. This is at the point, if you have any other discussion, if we want to do any changing, include it in the motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, put this out for bids, but with the elimination of the sidewalk on Second Street for that one block. Intended by Frederick's Tire and Oil.
And keep the current curb at the same location?
Yes. That works for you fellas then too? Okay.
You got a motion, we have a motion, do we have a second? Chair will second it. Is there any other dissec, discussion?
I guess my issue isn't with removing the sidewalk. I kind of about swallowed my tongue when I saw the price increase. So, uh, it, I, I understand that it's out of your hands, but that was one of the biggest.
You mean as far as the project?
Yes.
Well, I understand that this is going off for bids. It isn't
Right.
accepting, actually doing the project.
Right.
So once we get the bids, we, we can still throw this to the curb if it turns out even more than what. So the only cost we incurred would be the engineering costs and stuff like that. But we also have other phases. We've got that truck stop, storm pond and.
When it comes time to look at the bids and to award the bids, I'll have, uh, a financial, how, how we propose to pay for it. Like who's, what, what fund is paying for what part of the project?
Okay.
And how much we're gonna have to bond and what that estimate rates are. And I'll have that information for you. So you have this, how much it's gonna cost, this is how much we're gonna pay for it. So you have all that to make before you make that decision.
Thank you.
Okay. The one thing that we didn't discuss was the water and sewer stub bins for their warehouse locations. Are we gonna require that and do a deferral or are we?
Can we discuss, can we, can we include that? Um, but discuss options when it comes time to address the assessments?
So, on the assessment part, yes, but if you have like three choices, number one, don't install them at all. If you're not gonna install them at all, we need to know that now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when it goes out to bid. I guess we could take them out in the field and just not have to pay for that part, but we should know whether we're gonna put them in. And then when it comes to the assessment hearing, at that point, then if you can elect to just defer that until there's some future development or to assess it. So you've got three options. Don't put them in at all, put them in and defer the assessment, or put them in and assess. So that's your three options. But if you're not gonna put them in at all, we should know that when we, uh, bid it out, although they could be removed later.
So we have a motion in a second. Should we move on that and then discuss more or amend your motion? I don't know what, what we wanna.
Well, the motion in the second, yeah. The motion is to go out, advertise for bids with a removal of the sidewalk on the north side from Oak to Main Street. If you want to amend.
Yeah, I'd like to amend that. Uh, I don't think we need to put all this stubbing in. If there's no chance for them ever using it, why put it in? Why waste the, the taxpayers' money doing that? I mean, if they sell the property and somebody wants it, okay, now they can pay for it. But these guys shouldn't have to pay for that. That just doesn't make sense to me. So, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Diane amended her motion?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll second it. Also, we made the second, so.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
I guess it doesn't bother me much to put in the stubs and then defer the assessment until there's other development. I think that makes the most sense in case, um, the property at some point is sold or developed differently by the current owners.
What that would do was eliminate someone in the future digging into the street.
Mm-hmm.
It's, that was, that would be the difference between the two.
Right.
Could that be for, in the foreseeable forty-year future, which is what we normally plan these streets to last, is forty years before they need to be dug up again?
I left my crystal wall up in my office.
Right.
That's right. The only thing there is, if we did put the stubs in and deferred it, is that forever and ever, or is there a time limit on it?
It's up to you.
Okay.
We have some that are deferred to a certain date and we have that are some open-ended deferred until developed.
Okay. Or owner transaction.
Or sale, right.
Or sale, yeah. Any other discussion? I have a motion in a second. Does everybody understand the motion?
This is, and it's not including the stubs at all in this motion?
No.
In a second.
It's the elimination of the sidewalk, widening the road to the existing width and then removing the stubs to the two warehouses.
Right.
Okay.
Three warehouses.
Three warehouses.
Three warehouses, sorry.
Okay. No other discussion? Do we have a motion in a second?
How many parcels are there there? Are there three, are there all different parcels?
Four.
They are? Okay.
Yeah. And then there's one on the other side of the road too, right? So that would include, or is there water stub over there?
Yeah, I was thinking it was two.
Is the one on the north side of the road included on it? Right. But is there water and sewers planned to go into that one too?
We've got the sheets on the assessments, there was assessed all three, all three warehouses. Venus investment is also, um, not included, the product's shared on there, Venus investment is.
Okay. Okay. Call the question. All those in favor signify with say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven B, approve ordinance eight-eleven amending winter parking.
So, this is a carryover from the last council meeting. Uh, the operations committee had met as directed to review and recommend potential updates to the winter parking regulations. Currently, the city, uh, does not restrict parking on the streets in the winter months except during a declared snow emergency, with the exception of the downtown district where no parking is allowed from two AM to seven AM. And at last month's meeting, or last, two weeks ago's meeting, that was extended from Willow Street to East Street beginning March first. So that downtown, uh, no parking area was extended. Uh, the issue at hand is with the volume of cars on the street that seldom move, snow removal is always difficult as well as summertime, uh, s- uh, sweeping. The committee reviewed three options and then there was a fourth option added. They convert to no on-street parking from November to April, uh, convert to calendar parking, which is an odd even November to April. Uh, just leave it as it is and call additional snow emergencies. And then the fourth option was, uh, convert to calendar parking year-round, which would be odd even year-round. Um, after discussion, the committee, the committee member recommended the city amend its code by adding the calendar parking during the winter months and that we'd still have the snow emergency criteria if needed. Um, in addition, they had recommended that no parking, two AM to seven AM be extended, which was done. Uh, the police department is actually who had recommended that fourth option of, uh, year-round parking and that would also help with the forty-eight hour, which is becoming uh, it, more difficult to enforce simply because of regulations that are put on the police department. Um, the city council should consider the options if it wants to change the winter parking from the current. The ordinance that I do have in your packet is the calendar parking. It's the ordinance you had before us last month, except for I took out the two to seven because you already adopted that. And then, of course, at the meeting, uh, the committee had recommended the odd even parking, but at the meeting, the odd even failed, two to nothing. Uh, no parking failed, uh, or two to two, I should say. So both options failed, so it's still on the table and back to you tonight now that you have a full council. So you still have those same options in front of you. And whichever option you choose, that ordinance then would be amended to reflect that.
Questions, comments?
Um, so I watched everyone's comments from the last council meeting since I was gone, just to get the feel and the discussion points that were brought up. I probably am the most affected out of everyone on the council personally for on-street parking because of the topography of my own uh, lot in town, not having a garage, steep backyard. So I had an idea, which I don't know how the council would feel about it, but um, instead of having November first to April first, um, could we consider December first to March first, which historically we've seen December, January, February being the most snow events that we've had, and also consider increasing our snow emergencies in November and March. There were complaints about the congested areas, where, where do we park now? And sometimes those areas lie in areas where we've got, you know, available church parking that overflows onto the streets at certain times. So maybe there's an opportunity to talk to church leaders to allow for midnight to seven parking during those months to kind of, you know, we give to you, give back to us a little bit. Um, those were just some of the ideas that came to my head when contemplating everyone's opinions during this whole discussion. So, that's my two cents at the moment.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Basically, you know, convert to no on-street parking from November to April. I don't know if change in two months is gonna be that big of a deal.
It would as for me.
Well, you, basically, it's only, it's at night.
It's at night, but it's also.
You're talking midnight to seven in the morning. The one thing is, is we just had a snow emergency that went two days and I extended it to third day because it didn't quit snowing and we didn't have any issues.
My, my issue.
You know, three days, the whole city found a place to park their car.
But, but for, for two additional months, you're asking every. But, but for, for two additional months, you're asking everyone who parks on the street to find additional off-street parking. We can scramble for two days for one month. Two days in a month for a snow emergency when we might only have one event in the whole month. But to park off-street for an entire month when we might not see a snow emergency in the month of November or March is kind of a lot to ask for the people who do rely on that frontage parking.
And one of the things, and then to move on from that, to go to calendar parking, and we've mentioned Ash Street. There's no parking on one side of the street. We already eliminated all the parking on the street on one side. Well, those people for how many years now have got, found a way to park somewhere else? They're not crossing the street to park in front of their neighbors. They're parking somewhere else. The other thing is, is when we do a calendar, then on the side that you normally park on, it was stated we could park around the corner on the side streets. Okay, well, if I'm on a side street and all of a sudden, three people that park cars on the street, park it on my side of the street and I come home and I got one of them cars that's gonna sit on the street in front and now I can't because the neighbors filled up all the parking, I'm not gonna be happy.
But I guess a lot of the people on some of those streets have off-street parking, have garages, got, um, parking spots.
Not, there isn't an alley that runs the whole length of Ash Street on that east side.
No, but they, I mean, a good number of them still have, even on Ash, they've got, um, driveways and garages on Ash Street.
The other thing, go ahead.
One of the points that I think Vicki brought up during the last council meeting that I watched was that the increased number of people who are driving, who have, who are renting, but, you know, you're sharing an apartment building that might have one off-street parking available, but there's four vehicles for that, you know, one building. Yes, the tenant, or the landlord should be responsible for providing, but if the renter is made aware that there is only one available, then it becomes the renter's responsibility to find off-street parking. If we can eliminate the, the stress of that to just the three months where it makes it easier for our guys for the midnight to seven run, we don't have the calendar park every other day parking so that we eliminate the overtime for our, our street crew. I think that's the healthiest balance of kind of finding. People will find a place to park, but if it doesn't have to be four months out of the year or five months out of the year, can we, you know, make it as?
And one of the things is, like when we were talking about calendar parking, it snows Friday night. Saturday, the guys go out to plow, they can only plow one side of the street.
Right.
So then that means on Sunday, we're calling them back out to plow the other side of the street, so we're paying overtime for two days. And yeah, when they turn around at the end of the street, they can go down and then they're weaving over wherever there isn't any cars to clean that. But that's what we're doing now and that's what we're trying to get away from, so what's the difference?
I still think, and this is something that I've, uh, thought of as well after our discussion, but even look at, um, people having holiday parties, you know, over the Christmas in that December range. If you are limited in what you have at your house and you have, maybe somebody has kids, maybe somebody has family and there's nowhere to go and we're eliminating, especially during December, I think that that has a potential to cause issues.
The last time we had no parking on city streets, the two weeks of Christmas and New Year's, there was, it was allowed because of that situation. Kids home from college, people having, uh, family home. Then there was two weeks that they could park on the street and we worked around it. But then after that, it went back to.
Yeah.
So we allowed for that and the last time it happened, you know, that we did have it enforced. It's not gonna be the perfect situation. Um, convert to calendar parking, odd even, year round. I think we're getting everything so confused now that we don't even know what we want.
I agree.
We do it for a whole year. You know, it makes sense, but.
Less confusion if it's all year long and you don't need to worry about it, it's just odd days you park on one side, even days you park on the other side, year round, and you just know that's the way it is. There's really nothing to get confused about beyond that.
True.
I mean, and, you know, if we do have an ordinance that says you can't be parked in the same spot for forty-eight hours, well, now they can't be because they're supposed to be moving it, you know, to the other side, so.
Cause right now in the forty-eight hours, they're just going out hooking up to the trailer or whatever and moving it two feet and say, yeah, we moved it.
Well, now they're gonna move it to the other side of the street at least.
Yeah. So is it what, what problem are we gonna solve?
Well, for those, I mean, if you did do the calendar parking, um, you would still have the ability to call snow emergencies, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, it's not as though in your scenario where, you know, these big snow events, those can still be called. This is, to me, it's the best balance of saying we're not prohibiting people from parking on the street. You know, it's just, in some of the smaller ones, maybe, I, I guess maybe Ben has anything else he can add about what kind of overtime and it's gonna take, but for the smaller snow events, I, I don't know. You can still have that snow emergency and have the cars off the street. With the no street parking, I feel like you're pulling the rug out from too many people.
Okay.
And with the calendar parking too, I mean, we have our guys back out there hauling away, not necessarily that they plow one day, they'll come back the next day to haul some of that snow and some of those things too, so they're potentially out already.
So I think on the, like what you're kind of getting at, like when they go to plow, you're gonna plow the middle and then you're gonna plow one, uh, one way and then the other way. So on a, if they came and plowed on an odd day and these people all parked on the odd side, they'll part, they'll plow the middle, they'll plow the even side, they'll also plow the odd side if there's no cars there. You've got a few blocks in town that are more habitual, that there's gonna be people parking there. So if the next day someone, you might have to send someone in for a two-hour mini to clean up those areas. Just because it's odd even doesn't mean they're not gonna plow that side of the road unless there's someone actually parked there. So they will be having to go around those cars if they're legally parked and come back and clean it up the next day. But it's not a full crew coming back in. It maybe just sent somebody in, send one guy in or, or maybe two, it just depends on how many there are. Because they'll hit those habitual areas.
And the only thing there is, is if we are plowing around them, even if it is the next day to bring in a mini crew or to do it, we're still got that snow, snowplow berm stuck in the middle of the road that they went around a vehicle.
That cars will get stuck trying to move from.
Why we're trying to get, talking about this is try to get away from it. I either, I'm either, this is the way I'm thinking, is we go to no on-street parking from November to March thirtieth or first, thirty-first, basically to April. Or we just leave things the way it is and the minute we get two inches, we call a snow emergency and we're done. And then December, most of this last month of December, nobody's gonna be parking on the street because we had a lot of two-inch snowfalls. So.
I'd like to make a motion actually, based, based on that discussion. Um, but because I don't think five months of no night parking is necessary, I'm gonna make the motion for December first to March thirty-first. No on-street parking from midnight to seven AM outside of the congested area or the two, the bar area, the two AM parking area.
To March thirty-first, you said?
March thirty-first.
Okay, so instead of November, it's December, okay. Twelve AM to seven AM.
So I'm eliminating one month from that discussion because November historically is not a huge.
Right.
Snow month.
I agree.
Okay.
I'll second it, Heidi.
We have a motion by Heidi, seconded by Diane, for no parking from December one to March thirty-one. Twelve AM to seven AM. Is there any other discussion? Is this, are we making this effective immediately?
Well, we'll have to get signage and we'll have to get it published and notified, so it's February.
Right, that's the reason why I'm asking.
Can we make this effective December first of twenty twenty-two?
We could.
Then we've got time to figure all that logistics out.
Get all the signage up.
People notified.
Just a point of clarification, you said no street parking, you said twelve, ten to seven.
Twelve AM to seven AM.
Midnight to seven AM.
Midnight to seven.
So it'll only be those hours?
Yeah.
Right. You can park on the street anytime.
But that allows our guys to plow the streets when they're normal, having out at four o'clock in the morning to start plowing anyways.
Yeah, I'm aware, but I guess when I had looked over the other stuff, it was different.
We could ask them if those hours are adequate, I mean.
Cause a lot of times if.
Ben?
Cause a lot of times if we call a snow emergency, you guys are rolling by one in the morning to get ahead of it. So there's no need for the cars to be. And the one thing is, is yeah, we, our first snow emergency, we had, we towed what, fourteen cars the first time and then when we extended it today, we had two. So sixteen vehicles out of a town of forty-five hundred people isn't that bad. So to me, that's not a big deal. Let's, rather than pay overtime and wear and tear on trucks and everything else, let's get the roads cleaned right from the beginning and be done with it.
Yep. Do you want anything in that, um, I guess you made the motion. Anything to specifically say anything about the holiday time period or is that, cause you were talking about that being an assumed?
We can make that a separate motion if we want, but for right now. We got a motion in a second for no parking December one to March thirty-first from midnight to seven AM. Is there any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four in favor, one against. Seven C, resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen approving the application of Northdale Oil Doing Business as Sisters Beer, Wine and Spirits for a transfer of an off-sale license to be located at three twenty-one Main Street North.
So this is the off-sale liquor store that is located at, at Gas Mart? And I guess that's now Brothers and Sisters, Sisters Beer and Wine. And that has been sold and so the application is for the transfer of the off-sale license. And, uh, that's the only license that they have. So the liquor liability, the workers' comp, everything has already been received as well as the hundred dollar transfer fee. The effective date would be March first of twenty twenty-two. So we're looking at resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen approving this application of Northside Oil Doing Business as Sisters Beer, Wine and Spirits for the transfer of the off-sale license.
Questions, comments? Do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen?
I'll second it.
Motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven D, cigarette license application.
Along with that transfer, we have two applications for, uh, Northdale Oil to sell cigarettes at Brothers Market and also they have a separate license at Sisters Beer, Wine and Spirits. And so the council is requested to approve the issuance of those two cigarette licenses.
Questions?
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion by Diane to approve the two cigarette licenses. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shaolin. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven E, approve EMT class candidate.
Ambulance Director Kathy Stroopert, she's requested approval to enroll Alyssa Zimer in the EMT courses pending positive criminal history and background checks. Uh, she has been doing ride-alongs with the crew for the past several months. Uh, there is a class that's become available that is being paid for from a grant from Central Minnesota EMS Agency. And so that class actually begins on February seventh and it runs through May twenty-third. And so she would like approval to enroll Alyssa Zimer in that class. Uh, the only cost to the city will be then to sit for that national registry test at the end. And then if she is successfully, then we can appoint her as an EMT to the crew. So we're looking to authorize the enrollment of Alyssa Zimer in the EMT courses.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to authorize the enrollment?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Shaolin.
I'll second.
Second by Joel. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven F, approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash fourteen authorizing purchase of mobile traffic control signs.
So in twenty twenty-two, we budgeted for the purchase and installation of radar speed signs at various locations in the city. Uh, we are recommending that we proceed with the purchase of four signs, three of which are solar-powered and one of which is battery-powered. That battery-powered sign can be easily relocated, so we, we locate those on, uh, existing or new signposts. So staff will be able to move them to a new signpost elsewhere in the city if we're having issues like when school gets started, maybe put them by the school, uh, maybe have a one that's, a solar one that's more permanent by Holy Family will find the locations for them. The purchase is for a total of sixteen thousand six hundred and four dollars from Mobotrex. That's the same company that we worked with on the flashing pedestrian signs by the bridge and then downtown. If you have any questions about the particular signs, they're the ones that'll tell you how fast you're going and if you get more than five miles over the speed, it'll flash at you. Doesn't tell you what your new speed is, it'll flash that you're going too fast. And, uh, so we're looking for a resolution twenty twenty-two dash fourteen authorizing the purchase and installation and placement of the radar speed signs.
I, I have a question, Vicki, does this automatically send you a ticket? That'd be great.
It has lots of options.
It is, it is an option to be on camera if we wanna spend that money.
There you go. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash fourteen for the purchase and placement of the radar speed signs by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Uh, one question is when we get these and replace them, depending on where we locate them, is there any way we can get a sign attached to it that says no engine braking? Because I know we got it coming into town, but obviously they ignore them. So if they have a speed sign flashing at them at the same time, maybe they'll understand that those engine brakes are supposed to be shut off. It's just something to think about, but to me, that should be, that would just coincide, so. Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Uh, and we have no unfinished business, we have no new business. That brings us to our consent agenda. We have schedule of claims, unpaid claims of a hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents, paid claims of one thousand thirty dollars and twenty cents for a total of a hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy cents. We have resolution number twenty twenty-two dash fifteen accepting contributions of a hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifteen cents from the men's card-playing group to be allocated to the senior center. Uh, six hundred and eighty dollars from Big Sock Lake Association to be allocated to the park department for the day doc. A hundred and fifty dollars from Stelling Land and Cattle Incorporated to be allocated to the fire department. A thousand dollars from Oscar Jacobson American Legion Post number four seventeen to be allocated to the police department for the dare program. On behalf of the city and the council, I want to, uh, acknowledge those contributions and also thank them for those. Is there any other questions about the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Shaolin, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joel. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items.
I have the one informational items, it's the loss, or safety and loss control workshops put on by the League of Minnesota Cities. They are going back to in-person workshops this year. Uh, there are several locations throughout the state. Uh, if anybody's interested in attending, a lot of the staff will go, but also, uh, council members that have interest in, uh, some of the different tracts are certainly welcome to go as well. There'll be an agenda coming out that gives you a little bit more specifics about the items that they're going to be having at those workshops. So I'll get those to you as they come, but just kind of give you an idea, if you think you might wanna go to one, it's got the dates and you can certainly, uh, we'll get you signed up for that if you're, if you're interested.
Okay. Any questions about that? That brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.